Please. My pleasure, Legion, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, Teresa.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Bowen?
Here.
Matson?
Here.
Jazz?
Yes.
And Wolfslager is absolute oldest.
All right, do we have any additions or approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Matson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion or any objection on approvals of minutes from the 12:19 meeting?
Make a motion to approve the matson from 12:19?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Any bills?
No bills.
None? Public comment by anyone who... For items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, move to visitors. Stephanie with Sueland Library is here to give us an update. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come back.
Be back.
I like to visit once a year to tell you what's happening at the library next door. I hope you've got a chance to look over the memo. Our numbers are doing very, very well. Visitors are up, as is circulation, and customers still enjoy the expanded access, giving them options to visit the library when it's closed, too. Programs and outreach, we were able to do programs for children over the summer, and we have one very large adult program also. And outreach, we like to attend the Hartford downtown markets on Thursday nights and set up a booth with an activity. It allows us to have access to kids and get everybody signed up for the tutoring program, too. This summer, I'm pleased to announce that we'll be able to do one-on-one tutoring for a small group tutoring for children so that they can practice their reading and grammar and spelling over the summer. This is a free program for people. So it's a way to get your child to develop skills and keep what they've learned over the school year and be able to start in the fall, ready to go learning reading again. Signups will start in April, and we are, of course, looking for tutors in the community. So please direct anybody who has an interest to the library to apply for the tutoring positions. Service improvements, this was quite a year for service improvements. We have the expansion, which is very, very popular with the customers. I think it's why the numbers are rising at the library. We are still waiting on the shelving, unfortunately, but in the meantime, we put out more and more toys for... and crafts and things for families to come in and do at the library, too. We recently added, and this isn't in the report, but we have an educational computer for children that was added last week to the library. And then also, of course, you know about the Story Walk, and special thanks to Craig and crew for getting that installed at Turtle Creek Park. We have the book purchased and are waiting from the Communications Department with the City of Sioux Falls to get a copyright sign. It's required that it goes on one of the baseholders. And when that's ready and the heads are mounted, we'll have our first book. We are expecting that this month already, too. We are stamping the library with Leslie Wallace and Tricia Bates. Both are Hartford residents. Sometimes I look there, too. No changes this year in employment. And of course, you know about this Story Walk and winter reading programs in a way that is popular. Leslie reported today that we ran out of prizes, so more being sent, but that continues to be popular with people. And then we are also doing Everybody Reads. This is a big community event where we can model for children that books are for everybody. So anybody who reads or returns a book puts a... this time it will be a raindrop on the wall, and we try to fill that wall and let people know how important reading is. And then we will do a summer reading program and offer the Reading Bridge, and that's what we have planned for this year. We really enjoy serving this community. It is a pleasure to work with the city and have some new initiatives and watch the library grow and expand. If you get public comments or questions or concerns, my hope is that you'll reach out to me. I can be reached through Teresa. And we like to continually improve and find new ways to serve this community.
I have one question. Or you can go. How is this... our numbers, I see they were 19% up compared to the 2022. How is the library as a whole? How is the numbers across other branches similar?
No, I think they can only wish we had what we have here. I think it really is due to the expansion.
Okay. I was just curious if that... if our numbers are good in the range or with everybody else?
I don't know the exact figures.
Okay.
But I do notice they either flatline or they decline a little bit. It seems that more and more people are going online or getting their reading material directly from Amazon. So to have them go up like that is phenomenal for the library.
I got a quick... what age to do those reading for the tutoring? What age of kids do you start out with that?
Yeah, that's a good question. You have to be entering first grade and fifth. So it's that age range that can participate in the tutoring.
I will say I love the Toys R' Us. I brought one of my boys in there a month ago, and I could not get them out. So it's an awesome place.
It's one of the few places in town that you can take your child and just relax and enjoy. I mean, you can go to a restaurant and things, but this is one where the kids can make noise and have a really good time and are very welcome there, too.
Thank you.
That's good. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. We really enjoyed the partnership. Thank you for all the things you do for us.
Well, thank you.
You bet. All right, Scott Boss from Minnetonka Rural Water cannot make it tonight. He's scheduled... rescheduled this for the next meeting, January 16th, correct?
Yep.
All right. So we will move on to the applications agreements hearings resolutions. First top, 705 hearing for garbage license renewals for NOVAC sanitation, Crestman sanitation, Olti Sunrise Sanitary Service, AOK Sanitary, and Garbage Service, and RBS. It's in the packet. That's approved by staff. Any actions or questions from the council?
And then just to clarify, Teresa, so which... and I know this is in there, but... Crestman, NOVAC, who else services like residents and...
Like garbage service?
Yes.
Those two, Crestman.
Okay, is there any...
The other ones just basically have roll-off service.
Okay.
One order, large roll-off. And AOK sanitation, all of these are renewals. AOK sanitation is... this is our first application for roll-offs.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve all five garbage applications.
Did they have a second?
Jake did.
Oh, Jake's second.
Sorry. Very quietly. Why not? Frogging me for a while.
Wow.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Matson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
All right. Next up, first reading of ordinance 749. This is to update fines and fees. We discussed this at the last meeting. There's one in particular that has to do with bulk water and meters. And that is adjusted on the list now to... We're going to $6 for water or $7 for hydrant water per thousand and $100 a month for a meter, correct? Correct?
Yep.
All right, any action from the council on that one?
Make a motion to approve the first reading, reading of ordinance 749.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
All right, next up, first reading of ordinance 750, supplemental appropriation for 2023. Teresa has it laid out in the packet. Anything you want to add, Teresa?
Nope, I'm basically supplemental appropriation and then the resolution coming up for contingency adjustment are just adjustments in budgets, not moving any money around or spending any money. It's basically just changing those budget line item numbers. So if we overspent on budget, it'll increase it or...
I make a motion to approve the first reading, reading of ordinance 750 supplemental appropriation.
Second.
Any discussion?
There is a couple lines up here for like salaries and that, too, wasn't there? Or is that...
That's in the next one that contains the adjustment.
Okay, yeah, I'm ready. I'm good to move on.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Very non-volvo... Bowen?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Next up is Resolution 2024-1, contingency transfers for 2023. This is where we shift some money around, is that correct?
Yeah, and so a contingency transfer is just for the general fund. We have a bunch of time, put $50,000 in our contingency account. And if there's any shortfalls within the general fund, like streets, finance office, parks, or whatever, we can use that $50,000 to transfer to these other accounts to cover those shortfalls. Once again, it's not transferring money. It's just changing the budget line item. And this is where there... yeah, there's some in salary. Basically, you know, we're showing it in the finance office and in public buildings, but we really went over in salary in every department. But your end line item just has to be in the positive. And like in parks, although salary went over, we have money left over for money we didn't spend on the sports complex building. So I mean, it's not in the negative. So we don't have to judge that, you know? So we just got to make sure end line item for each account is in the black.
What is the salaries under the government buildings?
So it'd be like our public works guy. Mostly that was due to the Gage House, them working over on the remodel there.
So it's part of someone's salary.
Yes, yep, yep. These guys, yeah, when they turn in their time cards to care. You know, this week they spent so many times in the water, doing water stuff or with sewer or in the public building. So they kind of break down their work for each time card so we know what department to put it to.
So would you say a lot of this is overtime, then?
No, I'd say a lot of it's just a change in salaries, more of an increase last year than what we had.
Okay, because that was part of my question was if this was related to the raises that we did last year, which makes sense because we do those after the first year, the budgets are set for the year, which just brings up the question, is there a way to do that differently or just...
You know, we got a budget in September.
Yeah.
You don't get raises until the end of the year.
Right.
There was a high cost of living last year, so you know, it just kind of all played into it.
Right, and we all agreed to the raises, so I'm like, not all that surprised to see this and...
Right.
Just more just... or is this just something that kind of happens at the end of the year?
Most years were pretty kind of online, but like I said, this year I think we just got higher raises last year, so it kind of...
Right.
We didn't budget quite enough. Like I said, every department was really over in salary, so...
So in that spirit, because we're over because of the Gage House, but $13,000 in salaries, are you saying in another department possibly that we were under? Because we didn't have... we, you know, spent some of those allocated hours in a segment?
Most of them we were over. Yeah, we were. I'm just simple now. I think sewer had funds left over that, so maybe we didn't spend much time with the sewer at the local...
Didn't you notice that's why they were smelling?
Yeah.
What?
Exactly.
Now we're getting to action.
Just making sure.
You got to realize the Gage House, we had purchased that after budget. So none of these were repairs, maintenance. None of these, we had none of that in budget at all because we didn't decide to buy the Gage House until October, and budget was already set.
And really, the nice thing is that HEDF really and the admission 2025 helped us out considerably.
Oh, yeah, with the purchase, the initial purchase, yep.
You're right. This is just the repair work that we do.
Just a quick question. So like if somebody's over at the Gage House, one of our maintenance guys doing some work, how do they... is that tracked electronically or is this... are we still using time cards on this?
Time cards.
Have we... I'm just thinking, that's kind of out of date, right? So has there been conversation of...
Yes, there has been a conversation.
I mean, that's kind of a basic, I mean...
It'd be tough for us because we jump around so much.
Right, yep. So when you get this number of the certain... I mean, we're on the topic here, so I just, I want to understand it, but where does the $13,000 come? That's just like, hey, as best as we can tell from the time cards, right? This John Doe was there for...
And it could be City Hall, even just change home violence or something like that, or light bulbs or...
Yeah, it's all public buildings, but a bulk of it was, we know the Gage House. It's all work done on public buildings.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-1.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Matson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. Sean brings up a good point. We should probably maybe take a look at that, see if there's some way we can...
Yeah, it's technologyless.
We've talked.
Yeah, put it down in the white.
With our monitor.
I mean, a lot of it's phone apps, you know, if everyone's got a phone, a lot of it's phone apps. And I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, I don't want to micromanage people's time, but it is...
Yeah.
You know, pulling out.
May have come up recently.
What's that?
May have come up recently.
Yeah, may have come up, yeah.
All right, the last one under this category is review approved cannabis cultivation renewal application for grow farms. Information is in the packet. Andrew is here. If you guys have questions, can... it's explained, but can we explain what he's after?
Definitely. Excuse me, and I just talked with Tom today, and you know, we had to fill out a new application, and so we're looking at this as a new application and then just approving the application till March 15. Tom actually looked into a little bit more, I guess, and he thought we could extend the current one if we want to go down that road, too.
And that part of the reason, his license with the state expires, as I understand, March 15th?
Correct.
And so to keep those in sync with one another, so if he decides to continue the business, then he'd have a March 15 licensure with the city going in the same path and same timeframe as his licensure with the state. So this would just extend that license, paying the prorated fee from January 1 of '24 to March 15th, is what I understand Mr. Kennedy was asking for.
So would this require at some point an ordinance overhaul to accommodate those types of changes or...
It just says it's an annual license. He's requesting a partially due license, I guess. That wasn't anticipated in the ordinance, but...
Right. Well, what do you think?
Well, I think a renewal has to be approved. I don't know how you can have... how we can't if your state license or if we don't approve it, like your business is not effective.
Today.
Today or tomorrow.
If it's all right with the council, I'd prepare a short statement.
Sure, that'd be perfect, and go ahead.
This year was to be the year in which grow farms expanded operations and became profitable. Growing cannabis is not easy, but we are now growing robust, high-yieldy plants. Just a few days before Christmas, I received word, the devastating news that the price dispensaries would pay for our product has been cut in half. This was because the largest provider in South Dakota cut their prices in half. This will rather quickly force the smaller growers out of business, leaving the largest provider as one of the only providers. This shocked the entire industry, and it's a bitter bill to swallow. Note that this large provider is a cultivator, manufacturer, and operator with nine dispensaries in South Dakota. This price is forcing growth... the low price is forcing grow farms to cease operations. There is no way we can remain profitable with only half our former revenue. We are seeking a short-term license from the city in order to close out our facility in a legal, responsible manner. Without the city license, our state license is void, preventing us from closing our business in a responsible manner. The laws regarding cannabis cultivation are complex and restrictive. Closing out the business in compliance with these laws will take some time. To be responsible to our investors, we are also trying to extract any remaining value from the business. This is a highly unfortunate series of events, and we seek your help in the form of a short-term license to allow us to close out this business in a legal, responsible manner. Thank you for your consideration. What are your questions?
Okay. Thank you for...
I got to tell people, you get what you pay for, so if, you know, they're going to cut their prices in half, and who knows how long their business will be around, you know?
Well, how long until they get to open up any radios?
Yeah.
That's the tough part. It'd be nice to see a safe business.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah.
Can we do this, Tom, without an ordinance change? Because it is not specified in our ordinance to have this.
I mean, I think it would just be... I mean, if the council wants to be flexible with the applicant, you could renew his... he's got an application in for the 2024 licensure, but he's asking it for only a part of the year.
Right.
So I mean, whether you deem it a new license or a renewal or an extension, I mean, it's probably same result.
Is there any risk to that for us as far as...
He just needs to be able to have something to close out the business.
I guess, is there any state repercussions that...
I don't know that there'd be... how there'd be any state repercussions because you control the local licensing.
Yeah.
The state just says, you got a local license, local license, then you got a state license.
Well, my instinct is to request that the license be paid for in full, and then we could work on a rebate. So let's just say for things transpire between now and March 15th, and you don't have to close your business, rather than you come back to the city, pay more money for your license to extend it, the license is $10,000. And if in the event everything goes as planned on March 15th, you close the door, this allows us time to amend our ordinance to get this done legally, I think in a responsible manner. And then March 16th through the end of the year, we basically do this in reverse, and we cut you a check back for the difference. This is my instinct, also as a business owner, but also having to pay those fines, fines, but those license fees and having done this in my instance with commercial license plates to the state, paid for them in full, sold the vehicle, took the plate, took the tabs, took it back to the contractor, got a refund check back. Kind of just in the same, so to speak, or in the same...
I worry about the precedent there, just being like with a liquor license like mine or like PJ's license, if he, you know, came and said, hey, I'm going out of business. You did this for this guy. I want half my money back, you know?
Right.
Then we would then be stuck giving refund to everybody that goes out of business.
We're kind of caught both ways, okay? If we let him buy a partial, then we're on the other side.
Right, well, you let these guys go. Yeah, you're right.
We're kind of caught both ways.
Yeah.
As far as... because that's what I've been thinking about this afternoon.
Sure.
How do we do this and not be stuck on one side of the coin or another? I don't know how we do that. Whichever way we go, we're changing and setting a precedent. If we say, well, do a short-term license, then we're... people are going to come and say, hey, we want a short-term license.
Yeah, but we can say no. That's the thing, is that we can say no to that.
And they'll come back and say, well, you've said yes. And then you always open yourself up for that potential that somebody's going to say, well, we're going to...
Well, and I think every story, though, I mean, and I'm just kind of playing a little bit of devil's advocate on this, but hearing the story, in my opinion, actually understanding the context of what's going on, in my opinion, plays a big role in this. And so, and once again, I'm playing devil... I mean, I'm playing the opposite side of the law here, but I also can feel for a business owner here who supposedly is expecting something outside of his control, assuming everything he's telling me is true. You know, $10,000 for a new business. Obviously, the industry's not booming. If you've been reading news articles, is, I'm sure $10,000 is probably pretty hard to come up with. That's my opinion. I'm just throwing out other ideas here. But I like... but I hear what you're saying, and I like that side, too.
Yeah, I mean, he said since his renewal, you know, his renewal last year until now, to put that $10,000 away, you know? So while it may present a short-term inconvenience financially, at the end of the day, on March 16th, puts you in the same spot. So you mentioned investors. If I'm an investor in your business, you know, I'm really trying to look at this very business-like. And again, it allows our constituents a time if we should choose to amend the ordinance for them to get in here and voice their opinions as well, as opposed to putting all the burden on our shoulders. We have precedent set, and that is it's $10,000 to renew your license. But in this scenario, we're proposing this, and that allows the public an opportunity to speak their mind. It's kind of where I'm at. Yeah, it's not meant to, you know, put an undue duress financially on the business. It's not a new license fee. It's not an increased license fee. It's a cost of doing business that has been there since the beginning. Obviously, the business has changed rapidly.
I'm guessing we're all in the same... like, the heart says it would be nice to give you that reduced amount, but my head says it sets us up for every annual fee or license payment that we take that someone's going to want to come in and want it back or have it reduced. And I think that puts us in a bad position.
PJ?
Would it be possible to reduce the amount on the fee? I know that there's been a lot of other cities that have looked at reducing their amount of fee for cannabis because the industry hasn't turned out to be the way that it was. I know, like, I was just looking through the fees in ordinance in 749, and I actually didn't see the cannabis fee listed in there. So maybe that needs to be updated. But the cannabis renewal or the cannabis initial fee isn't in there, but the alcohol one is, and it's based on population. It's a dollar per person. I mean, is that something that we could take into consideration? That would meet closer to Andy's budget, but I wouldn't mind it for foreseeable future either.
We can't change it on the spot.
No, we can't, but I will speak my opinion. I think this is where I'm kind of against these fees on a personal level. I don't care what the business is. I just, that's my personal opinion. If you've got a business, it's either going to make it or break it, and I've got a little bit of an issue with, yeah, establishing, you know, fees on certain types of... and I'm not even pro weed, so I just want to be clear on that, okay? I just want to be clear on that.
It's cannabis, Sean.
Yeah.
Weed's a sidewalk.
Yeah, but like, you know, so for those future conversations, if I'm still on this council, if that happens, I think, yeah, I just... I'm open to that, but we can't decide that right now, so I'm speaking my personal opinion. That's how I feel. Let's get government out of some of this stuff. Let's make it easier for businesses to come here and try and generate revenue and bring in jobs. Let's not... let's get away of some of these roadblocks, whatever that business is, so...
Here's the other problem.
I'm setting down the microphone.
Another time.
Yep.
Here's the other problem, Andrew. We're up against the wall. Your license expires on the 4th, right? I mean, we're really, we're up against the wall. I mean, we got two days to try and figure... That's... when I first read this, my first reaction was, I don't know how we're going to be able to fix this deal with two days to deal with it, really. Because it takes us on a normal ordinance 60 days usually to get it done.
He was contacted over a month ago about renewing his license and didn't inform him until next...
At that time, I get it, and back to what Sean's saying, there's been a change in the circumstances, but that puts us in a terrible position to have to do something that may cause us repercussions down the road. And you understand, that's what we try to stay away from. We don't like having things... We don't like having things blow up. I'm just speaking as myself, because I'm usually getting some of those phone calls, and I don't necessarily like that.
In this case, we don't like to see him grow up and smoke.
Oh, man, that's too much, Dad. Too much. Okay, so, yes, hold on. Oh, go ahead. Let me, I'm gonna add Mark it up. Go ahead. Okay.
I'm the principal investor in Grow Farms. I happen to be Andy's dad as well.
Okay.
I think you know my brother.
Yes, I do. He was my business partner for a while.
We don't have $10,000.
Yeah.
We put everything into the business or got. We don't have $10,000. So, and I know it puts everybody huge on. The day we heard about this was a really dark day.
Yeah.
Um, and, and don't take this wrong. If, if we can't get a permit, the state become, permit becomes invalid, and we literally may not be able to go back into the facility legally. We may not be able to open the door, because that constitutes cultivation without a license. And so that's why we're asking for this short term, so we can close this thing out legally. And we, again, we don't have, I gotta wish we had the ten grand. We wanted this legally.
I have to ask a question, though. Had this not happened two weeks ago, how were you planning on renewing your license if it was due on the fourth? When you say you don't have the $10,000?
We don't have $10,000 to put in a, going forward, the light, the light of cannabis out, we're gonna be profitable this year. And right now, there's, there's no economy of scale. These other guys have a seven-acre cultivation facility that nobody can compete with. So, we apologize for this short timeframe, but it's inescapable and, and unfortunate for everybody involved. So, um, thank you.
You're back.
Thank you.
Mark, you wanted to say?
Yeah, I've got a lot of mixed emotions here. One, you know, we're all, I think, part of these, or most part, the license process, how we went through it, how many we would allow, how much we would charge, and, and you both know it was a lot of debate. And, um, you both knew the risk you were taking that, you know, for you, recreation impact. For you, your competition's squeezing you out. That's not our problem, unfortunately. And as a former business owner, I know that market conditions can change. People can lowball you. You take that risk, sometimes it works out, sometimes it don't. And so, I, I don't have a good answer for you, other than it's unfortunate. I hate to see the business leave, but the ordinance is what it is, our fees are what they are. And for now until March fifteenth, there's nothing we can do until you try looking at the ordinance, and maybe it needs to come down because of the market changes, you know? But, um, everybody that pulled the license, there's people that paid the $10,000 and did nothing with it. And they, they waited, and, and I guess they look like the heroes maybe, but, um, you knew the rules of the game.
As the guy behind the money, I, I would ask the councils if you have any guidance on what we're doing when we can't get back in the facility. I know that's not your problem, but I would seek the guidance, because we'll have this building full of growing cannabis we can't touch.
Right.
I think that's a, that's a concern for the state, not us.
I, I, you're gonna have to consult with your attorney. I can't, I don't think I can give you advice on what you can and can't do.
Yeah.
No, but, I mean, somebody at the state, I would have called personally and said, here's the situation we're under. What's the rules for closing up shop?
There aren't any, that, not that I've been able to find. This was not anticipated when they were on rules. So we're really put to a rock and hard spot.
Yeah.
And we wanna do the right thing.
Right.
Is there any way you could do, give us even thirty days? Um, and, and extension? That's not a new license, it's an extension of an existing license. I understand this is not, closing this down, even to process the stuff to dispose of at the landfill, takes time, it takes permission from the landfill and the state, and the whole bunch of stuff's gotta happen. So even a thirty-day extension would save us all a whole bunch of problems.
You know, with, with that train of thought, that, you know, and we use the word precedent, it, it's not maybe so different than the precedent that was set with the liquor license for the steakhouse, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, two, you know, if that's, if that's the mindset we take, then, then that's probably...
I, I would say, can we just give them an additional thirty days to pay for another year's license? And if it's not paid within the thirty days, then, you know, you don't have a license anymore.
And, and I would suggest to you, it may not be setting precedent if this is done in contemplation of a business going out of business and not applying ever for another permit. It's, that's a way different situation than somebody saying, you know, I just want this time. This is a unique set of circumstances that, that may not be, I'm not a lawyer, but may not be precedent-setting, so that may not be a problem for you.
And like you said, I, I think if it was our own personal decisions without other implications, we'd probably have a different answer for you, but it's, there are lots of unique situations that we hear on a regular basis with a request to waive or not charge or reduce, and it's difficult, um, to be fair.
We're, we're trying to avoid having a building full of cannabis that nobody can touch.
So what's, that's our, one of our biggest concerns. So what we did with the steakhouse was, right, because their, uh, license was up, their liquor license was up, right?
They renewed.
And they renewed that, or did we?
No.
No, we basically just extended their proposal.
We voted to extend that for a year, correct?
Yes, we just extended their proposal.
We extended their proposal for a year, so they paid their ten grand.
Yeah, another year to get up and going.
Right?
Yeah.
Whereas, we could have put that on the open market. So I think when we look at it from that context, from that lens, I would be in favor of doing a thirty-day extension, get your crap out of there, get rid of it, like, starting tomorrow, and close up shop. I mean, that's where, I mean, I've, yeah, I mean, I, I wanna voice my opinion, yeah.
You can get this wrapped up in a month, I mean, because that's, that's well short of your initial request here.
Yes.
But I think we're good, we can't do it without, without a payment of some sort, right?
Why?
Just extend their license and not have them pay for an extra month.
I would say it's, within thirty days, payment has to be made, or it's not valid. I don't know if that's an extension, if it's a grace period, I don't know what it is, but whatever Tom says it should be.
Kind of sounds like that. Does a new application not require the fee to be paid when the application is submitted?
I think they probably want to extend the contract.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Because then that kind of puts that, yeah, kind of gets rid of the fee requirement.
It's extended with payment due on whatever date.
It, it would require the new application to be considered within thirty days, or if they're in thirty days.
So we can extend the existing contract starting for thirty days legally, we can do this legally.
The license.
The ordinance doesn't address any of that. I mean, it just says it's an annual license.
I see your lease expires on two-one, so, I mean, is there any point in extending this past two-one?
My lease is good for five years.
Oh, he's, that's...
Oh, twenty-twenty-seven, okay, that was a, all right, got it. Twenty-twenty-seven, all right. We can extend it though.
I'd like to approve, I don't know what motion to make, but generally, what I would say is I would like to approve it with a grace period of thirty days to make payment.
I would second that motion.
If it's a motion.
If it's a motion. I think it was a question, Tom.
I'd be to extend the current license for thirty days to allow...
Give a thirty-day payment extension.
A new license application had to be submitted with full payment for approval by February one?
Yes.
Why did you sign a five-year cannabis business lease on twelve twenty-nine to twenty-three?
That is the, the, I didn't sign it on twelve twenty-nine, that was the lease that I signed, uh, when I left the building. Um, and that was a refresh of the existing lease, uh...
Property owner, their, property owner renewed it on twelve twenty-nine of twenty-three. Through two-one of twenty-seven, yeah, which is...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, which is, what's the, somebody wanna read it?
Yeah, um, to extend the current license thirty more days, at which time a new license and fee needs to be submitted by September first.
No, by February first.
Excuse me, February first.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
It's not as much time, but it's without any fee.
Fair enough. The ability to realize any, uh, further revenue from the business is dependent upon that three-month original timeline I stated. Um, we can do it in a month, but to do right by my investors, I gotta ask one last time if I can have that three-month extension, because that ti, that additional time will allow the plants that I currently have in flower to mature and be finished and be prepared for final sale at the end of that period. Um, if I go for a one-month period, one-month time period, that will not be possible. So that leaves my, uh, investors out a little bit more than they otherwise would be.
I, personally, I'm not willing to do prorated or waived or discounted. I mean, I, I see this as a grace period of thirty days. Our fees are whatever the same, they're not what they are.
But then it brings me back to my original comment, where you'd have to do a cash call to your investors to come up with these funds, and then work like the Dickens with us to get the rebate system in place and that ordinance.
A thirty-day grace period will be, will be sufficient for what we need to do.
Maybe you can come up with ten grand after the next one.
Stranger things can happen.
All right, anything else? If not, we'll vote. Bowen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right, thirty days.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on the reports, Mr. Deputy Sheriff.
All right, so wrapping up, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, in my report, I did some graphing. I'm very good at, uh, articulating this, well, I'll do my best. Uh, so in twenty twenty-three, our average call for service in the month was two hundred and forty. Uh, if you look at twenty twenty-two and twenty-one, twenty-two would have two hundred and nineteen calls for service, and twenty twenty-one was two hundred and fifty-six. I wish I could tell you why, but I can't, because I don't know, because it's just ebb and flow of law enforcement and the calls coming in.
Like in twenty twenty-one, so?
It was, yeah, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one is...
So I don't know if those more medical calls we're going to, I know we weren't very active during COVID. Um, but in Hartford, we were, so, uh, but these are the last three years of that I've been here, that I've been able to...
You're not a statistician, is what you're telling me.
Exactly, so, no. I went to college for criminal justice. What does that mean? I don't know. I wouldn't know what I learned there, so.
Transfamous.
Yeah, exactly. Here I am. Uh, so, yeah, really, I guess, I guess, um, what I probably failed to talk about, like, here on Insane Council Means, like, numbers, you know, you can look at them, they look good, look bad. I guess it's really one, two, three, four, four types of crimes where everyone calls them incidents, uh, that, you know, if we ever get to double digits is where it's gonna be, I'd be like, that's concerning, such as like assault or domestics, uh, DUIs, burglaries, thefts, narcotics are the big ones to just kind of always keep your eye on, uh, because once you see enough taken that, that's generally because methamphetamine is around, and people get desperate and they steal. And so, we haven't had too much of that during, um, twenty twenty-three. I remember in twenty twenty-two, it was like every quarter, we're having car hoppings, which people from seed balls coming in, checking yours, and taking credit cards, debit cards, cash, whatever. Not too much of that. I can maybe think of two strings that we had, uh, this year, which is good. Um, I think what really curbs it is our night deputies do a really good job in doing security checks at our parks, storage units, um, around, um, our gas stations, uh, a really kind of curve in it, because over at Cops Cup, if you look at our call for service, Cops Cups are high crime or high call for service, just because there's a lot of people there, we would have a lot of stolen cars dumped there. Um, and we have, our deputies do a really good job walking out with people, finding warrants, service, uh, people with warrants, people with meth, and kind of scoot them out of town where we don't really see that much, uh, anymore, so. Kudos to our night guys we got, uh, doing that. Yeah, uh, for, uh, December of twenty twenty-three, uh, in the twenty-eight days, we had two hundred and sixty-two calls for service, um, which is about nine point three-five calls for service, uh, per day. The only thing that was kind of, um, noticeable in this month was we had a lot more car accidents, we had eleven. Normally, we're in at four to five. A lot of that happened at West Central High School. Those students are just, I don't know, they just bump into each other. Most of them are non-injury. We did have one injury accident, but it was just minor injury. Um, let's see here, narcotics, we, there was about four arrests that we made where methamphetamine was, uh, a contributing factor. To it, um, let's see here, case reports, we had fifteen, which was an increase of six, and then we made nine arrests, which is an increase of six as well, too. So, as we ended twenty twenty-three, I think it was, uh, the mid-month, we're busy, and, uh, looking at the year as well, too, I would say we're very safe. We have really good law enforcement that are around this area that are doing their best to keep this town and this area safe. Any questions again?
Well, we appreciate you guys, how you do.
That's so good, because I wouldn't know how to answer any staff questions.
Let's brush up on those statistics a little bit.
Yeah, I'll read a book or something. I got them all, so, thank you all.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. Uh, next up, Economic Development Director Report, Amy Carr.
Thank you. I'm not as funny as Sam, I don't think, but, um, the ambassadors continue to deliver their welcome bags, and I know that Jean Rodriguez is continuing to reach out to the members and ask for any, um, promotional items or anything that, uh, the members would like to put in those bags, so she's been doing a great job at delivering those for us. Um, events and marketing, they're knee-deep in Burger Battle right now, so I've seen quite a few people already post on social media that they're having the burgers. Um, Kello will actually be in Humboldt tomorrow, Big J's, um, at nine-thirty to do a story on Burger Battle with Big Burger, um, so that will be fun to watch. And then, um, we'll continue to monitor those, and that Burger Battle winner will be announced in February at the Annual Bankway. That's something new that we started last year, um, so we'll look forward to doing that on February seventeen. So we'll have to hold that secret a little longer. Um, posts continue to be made on social media about the Burger Battle and so forth. Um, continuing to reach out to people for ribbon cuttings, um, mixers, breakfast events, things of that nature. Mobile app, continuing to update that pertaining to different things that we're doing, the E user as well. Um, I did have someone submit, um, an individual for me to reach out to, uh, late this afternoon for any members, so I'll be reaching out to them tomorrow, see if they would like to join. Also in the packet is the ribbon cutting and groundbreaking, um, events calendar for your review. Um, for the development side, um, continued efforts, working with prospective, um, business owners looking to come to Hartford, working on submitting a few different RFIs for projects, um, continuing to make, um, I guess, retention calls for Envision. Um, other than that, everything else is in the packet. Any questions?
Any questions, Ray? All right, thank you. Engineership Park, Michael?
Good evening, everyone. Um, couple project reports tonight, uh, Big Water Resource Recovery Facility. Uh, as I'm sure you've seen, they've already made great progress on the gravel being solid there. About halfway between four hundred and sixty-fifth street and the course of nerve. At the current rate they're at, uh, I can anticipate that they'll be to the Mickelson connection sometime next week, uh, at which point that will be on pause until. On the Aramont site, they're working on walls, they're now being repartched, um, and just continuing to push forward on that. Uh, location has been backfilled, uh, and work on that will continue, uh, through the winter into the spring. Um, and then last thing, quick update on the Highway Thirty-eight water main, that's the last meeting, we're making modifications to those plants to, uh, stub that water main just north of the intersection of Highway Thirty-eight and Colton Road. Um, and then coordinate those design changes with the Windsor Group, uh, owners of the land there, that are, will be tying into that. With that, that is, that's all I have, uh, if there are any questions, have the answer.
There's a lot of rebar out there, some of those walls, they've been working on that for weeks.
Maybe more of an observation, I was down here one day last week, when was that?
Thursday.
Karen and I, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was Thursday, that's right.
That's the day we were here with Tracy.
Yeah, we observed that semi.
Oh, yeah, that was after, yeah.
So that was Thursday.
Thursday.
So that was full of our pipe.
Oh.
And so, just a, just a reminder to the, to those, to those folks.
From these truck.
That's not a truck route.
It's not a truck route.
Or maybe they can be fined, we have an ordinance where if you're driving on, you can be fined.
We have to find them first.
If you have to find them, find them, yes.
But it was a load of, it was a load of pipe.
Yes, not, not terribly heavy, obviously.
Right, but still.
Trucks, trucks everywhere, you know.
Another observation, right up at the corner of Mickelson and, uh, Highway Thirty-eight, one of the trucks dumped a bunch of that oversized.
I got a hold of Bay that day.
Man, that was a mess, that was dangerous almost.
Yeah, I was, I went up that way and I see it and I got a hold of Bay right away, the site works, and he sent somebody over, cleaned up, so.
Yeah.
Sure be nice if we ever get that nice GMC pickup, it'd impart right on the shoulder there.
I think it's not gonna hit their vehicles that night, like tonight. They're parked on the shoulder when it starts.
Yeah.
Middle of the road there.
Okay, I drove, I drove by the night.
I noticed that last Friday morning, the gentleman, whoever, the worker was starting the equipment, was, had his car broken side of the road without the hazards on it. And it was just like, oh yeah, obviously, we could just be a little safer.
Yeah, all right, that information.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
All right, anything else for Michael? Thank you.
Thank you.
Old Work Superintendent, Mr. Craig.
I don't have any changes in my report, I guess everything, I, we got the Christmas lights down today and, um, got those walk, uh, book walk, whatever things put in on Friday, so. It's Friday, Thursday, Friday. So I have no changes in my report, anybody has any questions about it?
Ice frost is in the ground.
Back when we were doing them, we didn't have any, the rain took it out, but now there's probably four or five inches major, be my guess.
Is the red light pickup with the blade powers, or is that?
Red light pickup.
Is that the fire department's?
That'd be the, fire department's got a red, our red truck with a blade on it, we don't have, all of our pickups are white.
I think it was ours, I'm like, no, that's not ours, I'll, I'll visit, fine, they, uh, whatever was going on the other night, uh, with the incident. When I were heading, they were coming south, so from it, I assume, and going double or well over the speed limit right by. South by where all the trucks are parked, and we met them, and you can't see the blade, so maybe they saw us well, but it was not, I don't know.
Not safe.
No.
Yeah.
Way too fast.
Pucker factor was high, yeah.
Yes.
I have, I have. I had a thought while I was looking through this, Craig, how are you guys doing on your, what do you need, class three for this?
Yeah.
How are we doing on that?
Um, we're gonna, there's another class coming up in May in Sioux Falls that we're gonna, they only do the advanced, um, uh, wastewater classes like every other year.
Oh.
So we did that one, uh, a couple of years ago, tried, and we took a test, we're a few points under passing both of us, but we're gonna have to talk to Jesse about that, starting probably the next couple of weeks. We're gonna sit down and do a bunch of online classes and that stuff, and get ready for the one in May, so.
Okay.
So we should be, hopefully, pass on.
Is the plan, and both of you guys get your three?
Yeah.
And that's what we need minimum for running that new plant?
So if we had another operator out there, we could assist out there, at least they could run underneath one of our licenses for the plant.
Right.
So we don't, so we keep them violation of states.
Are we at a point, in your opinion, Craig, when we, when do you think we need to start looking at somebody?
Yeah, we talked about this, and I just, I said there's no reason to hire anybody this early in the game, because all they're gonna do is sit and watch and put rebar up.
Right.
Or they're gonna be working with us, you know, so, uh, we have that, a couple people inquire about the job, if we are gonna hire that. So I would say, I think if we budget in August, September for a person next year, I think we'll be.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, because that's when, that's when you start putting all the technical equipment in and start getting things hooked up, start working through problems with everything. And then, you know, it's, we're planning on opening up late summer.
Is that October?
Shooting for, we have to have it open by, we're up and running by October of twenty twenty-five. But I think we're shooting for like June, July, to be actually starting to use water that way, which if we pick somebody up, then it'll give them a chance to be able to see the equipment and see the operation, see the plant without any water in it, and under, get to understand it, but as far as hiring somebody this year, just sit out there. Stop altogether, just doesn't make any sense.
Is that a full-time?
Twenty twenty-five, like our budget for twenty twenty-five?
That's what I would shoot for, twenty twenty-five, yeah.
And that's a full, like, in, in the future, there's gonna be a person who is staying out there, I mean?
I'm, I wanna talk to, uh, Toby and, um, uh, Justin with, um, Harrisburg. Um, they both, or Justin's actually one that's running the plant out there right now, I wanna see, cause it's same type plant, exactly the same. So I just wanna see what kind of hours they're actually putting in out there. Um, we believe that it's probably gonna be like a four hours during a, a day, normal day, just to check things over. Clean stuff, do the bar screens less you're dry, or do you want to include sludge or something, one day it might be a full day. Um, your normal testing, we think in about four hours, it should be in and out of there, but then you'll still have some mowing to do, or upkeep to do on the plant, so. There'll be down times where they can come over, drift over into town here and help out, and stuff like that, so. It'll be a full-time position, just whether they're out there full-time.
Sure.
And then the other thing is too, we have to wait until we get a permit from the state to see if they're gonna require somebody out there every day. Just, uh, even if you have to go there just to physically walk through the plant, look at it, make sure nothing's going on, nothing's wrong. We do have that right now in place with our lift stations, we have to check them at least once a week, we have to physically go check them. Um, you can get on your computer, and you can see what everything's doing, but you physically have to go out and do an inspection every week. So, I'm thinking this, I don't know how they're gonna work, you know, depends on, cause the way this plant is, it's pretty self-running, once it gets everything set. Um, but if they make a mandatory permit, that we have to have somebody out there every day, then we're gonna have to rotate some shifts.
And that's Sunday, that's must, Saturday and Sunday, so, yeah, if you could have a couple guys that are licensed, or yeah.
That's where, with Jess and myself, we have somebody else out there, plus if we had somebody as a class two, they could even go out there and just look at, you know, but they'd be underneath of us. So if something went wrong and they didn't catch it, it's gonna come back to us.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, we ran into a guy at Farmers Market.
Yes.
Last summer, he was traveling through.
Yeah, I got his name, yeah.
Did you get his number?
I got his number.
Okay.
We had, we actually had a gentleman from around this area that, um, sent us over all of his information, and he's qualified.
Yeah.
Well, we came out to it.
Yeah, this guy's in South Dakota, can, so, yeah, someplace in the south.
Um, to your point about the electronics and having too many different things to do it on a mobile app, uh, that's, there's a lot of options out there. I think there's, just plant that seed, there's a lot of options out there, there's a way to do that to get away from paper, but definitely.
Can, can they do it on flip phones?
That could be the catch.
We've got flip phones.
Solid question, yeah, solid question.
No. So what you're saying is time has stood still.
Yeah.
That's what he's got in mind.
Always, always in a jam.
Always something going on, you look like you're not doing that to us, and you're doing it. Uh, all right, thank you, Craig, any other questions, Ray? Now we'll move on to Karen's report, Finance Officer.
Yeah, my report's in the packet, I don't have anything to add. I do have one action item to set the election for next year, we're gonna have three open seats. Ward one, there's the one-year and the two-year, and we're two and three, a two-year seat in each ward, so, um, normally. Pardon?
Four open seats.
Four, or four, yeah, sorry, can't talk to you. Um, so yeah, normally, um, the state regulates when elections are, and Hartford has always done the second Tuesday in April, which is April ninth this year. Um, so, just need a motion on setting the election date.
What day is it? Cause it says nineteenth of the top paragraph, and it says the fourth and the second.
Yeah, not Teresa's.
I have a draw on my report under possible action, it's not the fourth, it is the ninth. On top. On the agenda and on top, it's right.
We just had this.
We just have this discussion.
It says the nineteenth.
It says the nineteenth, well, on the background, summer.
I can see on the calendar is the ninth, so.
No, two, yeah, you got three different dates. So take the ninth as the day, Jiminy Christmas.
Danger templates.
It's all those coffee and drugs.
Yes, I have been on a lot of drugs last couple of weeks, I'm just telling you, medication.
All right.
Make a motion to set the election date on April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
The discussion. If not, we'll vote, that's it.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yeah.
Keel. Jess.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Uh, Karen, you really missed an opportunity, you should have really tutored the horn here on this, uh, ninety-five thousand of interest that we picked up.
Oh, my thumb back, yeah, I should have reiterated that.
You should have probably, uh, that is, that's awesome.
Yeah. Possibly surprised when I saw it, it's not much more.
I also like seeing the, uh, year-to-date, the revenue's a million dollars higher, and the expenses are six hundred thousand more.
Excellent metaphors, statistics, yeah, it's numbers.
Good management.
Blue balls, yeah.
It's not funny for data plans, yeah.
All right. We'll move on to Teresa's report.
Not gonna talk much, they already gave you the project update. Um, basically, um, the new chamber director, Winham, is going to start tomorrow, we have orientation at ten o'clock, so. Um, met with Scott Schrader, with the, the new chamber president today, just to make sure we're all on the same page of what she should be doing, what she should not be doing, so, you know. We give one direction to her versus from twenty different people, whatnot, so kind of like all that out, and we will get her going tomorrow. And we'll start working with her to get her up to the, the chamber website and software program or whatnot, and get her trained, so.
Who's her director, I mean, are you her director, or is Amy, okay, so you're her director, who is, what's kind of the structure of that of? Who's telling her what to do?
So, I talked to Scotty today, and what's been an issue in the past is that this position is, you know, there's the chamber board, there's all these committees they have, several people. Somebody will say, hey, do this, maybe the same person on the same, or not same person, but somebody on that same committee, hey, we know, we want you to do that. They get a lot in different directions, and I told Scotty, I don't wanna start this off this way. He said, if your committees want, think that this person should be doing this, or not this, or whatever, they need to report it to you, you report it to me. And then we'll, we'll get it implemented, you know, if it's sound or right now, so, there's a solid chain of command there, so. They're not taking direction from several people in different direction.
Yeah.
And yeah, he, he totally agrees, he said, yes, he'll iterate that to his members of his board, so.
And I'd say, we're gonna watch that to make sure that it doesn't get.
So we wanna start this off right, so we don't have any issues. So yeah, so we'll, we'll work with her and start getting her going, um, I will talk with her, you know, this is a seller position, and we've talked about some weeks, she'll be working. You know, whatever events are coming up, might work quite a few hours, some not so much, but, um, especially here this beginning, while she's training, um, I'm gonna try to figure out at least a couple, three dates. Where she'll have set hours in here, so, you guys will know when to get hold of her, or the chamber people, know when to come get hold of her.
Come to the meetings, or not, is that?
I'm, I'm, I talked to her about coming to the next meeting, to kind of introduce herself to everybody, you know, those that weren't on.
Yep.
Meetings after we get her started, so I tend to lay her down, come to the next meeting to do that, and then she'll be, you know, starting to attend the chamber meetings and whatnot, so we'll go through all that tomorrow with her. So, yeah, um, besides that, I guess the only thing is, um, we talked about putting in, um, RFIs out for IT service. I did send them to about, um, I think eleven different companies, gave them to the end of this month, January, for proposals. I have been contacted by a couple already for just more information, so hopefully we'll get a few proposals in that we can compare and then decide how we wanna record with that. Any other questions?
Uh, the township thing, is that kind of calm down a little bit, or do we know, wait, is, we're really waiting on them?
Like I put in my report, I, we haven't, I haven't been contacted at all, and you haven't contacted, or anything, so, we kind of kept it with them to, have any contact us?
Yep.
Okay, and evaluation, you got all done, or anybody else in council wants to stop and take a look at it, you can? All right, anything for Teresa, anything else? If not, we'll move on to the new business, first up is a pre-purchase of the new transit van, it's in your packet. We talked about this just a little at the last meeting.
Right, so I placed on the agenda, um, for this meeting, um, like discussed, Rocks has this van, um, it's basically, it's not a bus, ten-passenger, versus a seven-passenger van. Kind of a longer extended van with the higher ceilings, it could get, um, five pas- seated passengers in it with two wheelchairs. Or you can get one wheelchair in it, and, and there would be like a flipped-down seat that would go into that other place of the wheelchair, so. Um, could be up to seven passengers on this van, if we chose to move, this is a brand-new van they purchased. Um, what they had originally purchased for town didn't work out, so they have it available, they're offering it to us. You know, our original plan was, you know, our bus is no longer viable, so we were gonna, Rocks was gonna apply for a grant this year for us, usually takes about a year to hear from them. We were thinking twenty twenty-five, we would possibly get a van, just kind of use that timeline up a year if we choose to move forward with this. Put, they gave us, um, kind of a layout of the van, I put that in the packet, plus they gave us, um, the invoice for the van, you can see the actual dollar amount, and they put a few statistics there. If you notice on the bottom, as far as kind of who drives it, and what kind of trips they do. Usually, two to four people, a trip is usually what we get, so we don't have a large rider ship, you know, obviously, we'd like to see that grow, but this would allow for some growth in that. They think it could probably cover us for at least next five to seven years, going up this route, which at that time, maybe we'd wanna look at another piece of equipment, but, um.
Probably better gas mileage? Probably better gas mileage?
Yes, uh, one thing about their, probably their gas mileage, than an actual bus, will be easier to maneuver, an actual bus.
Add an extra heater, that's great. So, to approve the purchase of the new transit bus. Need discussion.
I've got a couple of questions, real quick, so, are, if we move through with this, we buy, it's, it's our, it's the city's bus, or van?
And the state, where it's a share of, the state pays eighty percent, we pay twenty percent.
I understand that, who owns the bus?
It'll be titled in the state, yeah.
Okay, how long is this program going for? Cause this, we're on this program with Rocks, right? Is there a, uh, an, an end time in this? This is just something that's just out there, so.
It's, yeah, I, I mean, every year, I mean, you have, I think you have to give so many notice if you want to end your transit with it, I don't know if it's ninety days.
So the only cost that we have is the twenty percent?
I won't say it's the only cost, the only cost of this bus is this twenty percent. Now, we contract with Rocks to manage the system, and that's seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay, okay.
And then we have obviously maintenance.
Rocks pays for all the maintenance.
So then we have, uh, they pay the driver.
They pay the driver, the hiring.
The gas.
The gas, all the maintenance, the only thing we pay for, obviously we'll pay our twenty percent for the bus, but then the seven thousand
Years.
Covers all management costs, all hiring, maintenance, seven thousand is a flat amount.
So much per mile.
Nope, nope, it's straight seven thousand.
As long as you want this particularly, call it ours.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And so the other van was ours, though, the other van that we were sold, okay.
Yeah, and that, that. Yeah, and that, that we had not gotten through this grant program, we had, uh, bought a used one from another community and, yeah, so.
Got it, okay.
And we actually got six thousand, so we're.
Yeah, and, and, and Rocks says we can use all that we got from that proceed.
Right, so we're gonna net this at sixteen.
Right. Exactly, so, I, I, I think it's a pretty good deal and get this up and going.
Any other comments, discussion? Not, we'll vote, Bowen.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right, thank you, next up, we got a couple of new appointments, sorry Craig, I didn't talk to you, but I'm assuming you're okay with staying on? So, uh, each year we put on one member from the staff, one member from the city council, I did talk with Chris today, I would like to appoint, uh, Craig Wagner from the staff, Chris Loslawer from council for one more year on the park and ref board. Let's go through.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll, Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jess. Bowen.
Yes.
All right, uh, executive session, we need a motion for executive session for just economic development, I don't think we have anything to leave for personnel. Teresa.
I do have evaluations, if you wanna look at them, talk about them a little bit, that's up to you guys.
Oh, we wanna look at the, uh.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session for economic development personnel.
All right, second. All in favor? All right?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.